Number four.
Good evening, I'm Bruce Tibrel, I'm the PDW Director for the Town of Anover, and also Vice President of SS County Highway Association. I couldn't echo more my colleagues tonight. I think they put it very well. I think you've seen a theme here that we definitely believe that if we get to 300 million, that we can plan and develop sustainable projects. More importantly, we need to have some predictability in this program. Last year, I too got some local funds to put into the projects, but I happened to cut my program shot in August, at the end of August, because we were trying to push too much funds through a small pipe. We couldn't get the contractors programmed and up to speed. I got some in the early part of the year, but it couldn't be done by then. So we ended up having to push a lot of projects out. And I hear the same thing from everybody that's a member of my association, that we really need that predictability and consistency in the program. And I hope that they will have the Chapter 90 be predicted every year in the long run. Again, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. Number five.
Hi, my name is Bob Lang, I'm the Director of Public Services at PB. And I'm here along with my followers from SS County Highway and Mass Highway to ask you for 300 million dollars, if possible. Currently, the funds that we receive for the Chapter 90 program are vital for our community to pave our roads and to maintain some of the infrastructure that we have. The 300 million over a multi-year program would enable us to be able to put more money into this vital program. Currently, PB receives in the neighborhood of 1.2 million dollars a year, and just our backlog of work alone is in the 25 to 30 million dollars a year. So as you can see, each year we're putting in some capital, and we're just getting farther behind. We have a community of over 50,000 people, we have over 170,000 miles of road, and we do utilize many of the programs that you're talking about here tonight, where actually doing an accelerated bridge program on one of our bridges, and we really appreciate that support from the state. Much of what we're bottling tonight in the plan is extremely positive for the future, and that is transparent. You can see what's going on, you can see where you're trying to put the money for our vital infrastructure. One of the things that we'd really like to see is releasing Chapter 90 funds April 1st, early in the year. I want to reiterate what my colleague said, it's very difficult to plan and do work if you don't know when the money's going to come. And everybody ends up getting the money later in the year, and then everybody's using the same contractors and resources to try to get the job done. With that, I'd just like to reiterate, we would like to have this money in the future, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Number six.
Thank you. Tom Philbin from the Massachusetts Municipal Association. The MMA represents 350, 351 cities and towns, depending on where you're interested in the news. But I just want to, first of all, thank you for having this meeting, and thank the Governor and Secretary Davy, and members of the legislature for raising this issue. It's been an incredibly difficult battle over the past year or so. The last time the gas tax was raised was 22 years ago. And that's unlimited, because this whole time the cost has been going up for maintaining our roads. Secretary Davy had said in many meetings, you know, "We're doing outreach, this is what the people want, they want to invest in infrastructure, in roads and bridges." In fact, 60% when they did a poll on whether folks would support the gas tax, 60% said yes, as long as we know where the money's going, as long as it's going the roads. That was a big thing. In fact, our own stakeholders, interviews and questions were out there, and the answer overwhelmingly aligned with maintaining transit was maintaining local roads. So that's what we wanted. In fact, you mentioned a state of good repair, and that's where 80% of the money's going. When it goes to Chapter 90, which is basically pavement management, what this does, and crack sealing and some other things, repaving roads, what this allows is for those roads to last much longer than it would. In fact, if a state isn't kept in a state, if a road is kept in a state of good repair, every dollar invested to keep it properly maintained will save $6 to $10 in avoided repair costs that become necessary to rebuild a road when it fails due to lack of maintenance. That's an investment, that's saving money in a lot of... So I have to say, these guys, Mass Highway Association, members of the municipal, officials throughout the state, lobby hired, educated residents, went to Ed Ward meetings, went to public hearings, and testified, and told residents and convinced them that that's important to invest in, in this gas tax and the 3 cent increase, and then some of the possible. But it's short-sighted to level fund Chapter 90 at 200 million dollars. We already know that it's going to save you $6 to $10 down the road for every dollar invested. We're just trying to maintain the roads. If you go out in the arts today and look around, potholes are everywhere right now, and it costs a lot of money to fix it. We need to maintain those. Now, I want to add in real quick, the gas tax was part of the solution, but there's also a ballot question right now. The gas tax was also indexed to inflation. That's incredibly important. Like I said before, it took 22 years in a crisis of the MBTA, in a crisis with our local roads, in a crisis with our bridges, to raise it three cents. 22 years. What will happen now, if it's not indexed to inflation, it could take another 22 years and wind up back here again. So the fact that people were called, 60% said, "We agree with that as long as we know where the money's going," and assuming it's going the local roads, to have none of that gas tax written on right now, level fund it, go to increasing Chapter 90, is not paying highs and paying foolish, I should say. It's got to be invested. There was a commitment out there, it was 300 million dollars, it was a proposed 300 million dollars over 10 years in your last capital plan. The next one comes up, it's 200 million, level fund it for the next five years. So it needs to increase even incrementally, but we need to do that to maintain our local roads and keep the commitment of Commonwealth to local cities and towns. After all, the gas tax was invented and created in 1973 to help local communities find their projects. We need to continue that, and we need to continue our partnership with the state, because we can't be fixing our roads with property taxes limited by two and a half, and other pressures put on municipalities. We need that gas tax to go to our local roads, and not just the Mass State highways and the public transit and everywhere else. It's got to go to local roads, it's the most efficient money spent. So thank you very much. Sorry, thank you, Mr. Phil. I think it's, you bring up several good points, but one in particular that I'm going to underscore, and that's the fact that the indexing is going to be a ballot question, as we understand. And however, if the indexing is repealed, the capacity for funding is not in the tens of millions of dollars, it's in the hundreds of millions of dollars that will be curtailed if that indexing is not, if it does not remain as the plan calls for, to be done now. Thank you.
Number seven through 10, please.
Good evening, everybody. I want to, first off, first off, my name is Jack Sussback, an Anover resident. I want to thank you all for coming tonight. I want to commend you guys, as well as Secretary Davy, as well as Governor Patrick, for all your support to try to develop a competent, comprehensive transportation plan to try to get to statehood. I'm at very tough times, I'm the actual, but it's a good plan to try to start something. Just a little background, while I was interested in transportation and planning, I found under the page on Facebook recently, kind of, when the blue lines went. Me and stuff all, just, I was went, almost started the page a couple months ago. We already have almost 2,000 posts on Facebook, just some idea of when the blue lines went. Now, I think that's one most important part of speaking, getting funding, that's the really important part, getting funding. But I think the blue lines went would be the most important part of people here for North Shore, because it would move more people in and out of North Shore to Boston, the airports, than almost any other part. It would move more people, in a single day, it would move more people to South Coast rail lines and higher than that important. So I think there's clear demand for the land to happen. Now, I did notice when we moved Massachusetts Plan, moved forward plan, we have Indigo Line enhanced rail service to come to the land perhaps, so to create a corridor. And as the interim process, I already knew that plan, that could be twisted back, that would use enhanced service for land, and some of these other corridors, like Austin, connecting the Water Friends downtown Boston to everywhere else, so I think that's a great area. Of course, if we were to do that, that could also improve downtown, there's a train station, it's a nice station, but it's already 20 years old, I think it's time for it to be fixed up. And if you do have that enhanced Indigo Line service, I think that every station that needs to be enhanced could be Chelsea, because if people are taking the chance for land or a Sino or Rockwood, and they want to go to the airport, say, "We don't have a line," they would want to go to Chelsea. I don't want to pass the plan, if it goes to the subway instead of Chelsea Station. Well, if you make a nice new intermodal station, where they could train right to subway, that's not the blue line, but it's a nice step in between. But I want to intercede a bit, the blue line is such an important project, the city and land has moved forward, if we have casinos down the line, the airports, the tech, the more show will be very important. What other there that I want to mention, statewide transportation training is great, which is going to impact the entire state. And if you get the enhanced rail service to go on the Boston, the Springfield corridor, relative to Clarkwood, how I recommend it, because I think it's a shame. If you live in Worcester, you can't take a train to New York or Hartford. You only option the roads or the bus. There used to be a train that ran every day from Boston to Hartford, and it wasn't that simple. So like, how I recommend it, if you do that, enhanced cell station, that would be great. You do all that, why don't you build a self, a self rail line? It'd be very hard money, but it'd give me good plans. So those are some ideas that you guys consider. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much. Number eight, please.
Good evening. My name is Seth Dalba, I'm a downtown land resident, president of the Downtown Land Neighborhood Association, editor of LandHappens.com, and co-contributor of Jack Sussback on the Bring the Blue Line to Land Facebook page. And I just, I have to second everything Jack said, because it makes sense. Whether the money is there now or not, I think it's important that we start laying the groundwork, so that we don't kick the can down the road, you know, every generation. 50, 60 years ago, I think, there was talk of bringing the blue line here. There was talk of bringing the blue line here as big dig mitigation, for example. I have a few notes, so bear with me, I'll still be brief. So we're a city of over 90,000 people, that needs better rates to get in and out. We have limited space for road improvements, so we need to look to mass transit. Now, I'd like to say, leave it to the experts, they'll figure out the best way to get mass transit here, but I'm not convinced the Indigo Line is an adequate solution. The Indigo Line isn't quite the blue line. Also, we live in Area 4, we pay tolls in Area 6. And what benefit do we receive from that? Downtown land is a transit-oriented community that lacks adequate transit. Unless you're an 95 employee in downtown Boston, or you can, I mean, there's some people who, I almost forgot the buses, but yeah, I hear complaints about the buses too. It's, we're a growing community. We have newer markets that are going to come online, the Quor Broad and Sosby Streets. We have a project proposed for Market Street. We have a huge project proposed on Washington Street, Lower Washington Street here. And those residents are going to need increased levels of service. And I'm sorry, my neighbors are not here, they're still on their way home from work. They're on the train, they're on the cloud voyage right now. And as the community quotes, "Our needs are not being served." 91,000 is a lot of people, and the entire region, not just Lynn, will benefit from the improved service and user access in and out. I can only see it being good for the entire regional economy. Thank you. Thank you.
Number nine.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Fred Moore. I used to represent the Town of Saguas, the Little T Advisory Board, along with other citizen advocate positions. My first suggestion to you people with Mass dot is, maybe you ought to get yourself a laser pointer, so you can put in your pie chart there and everything. But I'd like to say, I made a public comment many years ago, about we had a lot of redundant overlapping bureaucracies concerning transportation around here, it'd be nice if it merged them all into one agency. Congratulations on getting there, you know, some things do go right, and some things don't. I got this very ambiguous numeral that I underlined as a six, and ever since I became nine, at the convenience of the highway lobby, where municipality after municipality says, "Where's my free money for roads? We want more free money for roads." And they do that all the time. And so what I've got to say is, you know, the highway lobby is a bloodless beast with a sensational appetite, and we've seen scant expansion of transit railways since I-95 was canceled in 1973. We thought things were going to be different. We've been waiting a half a century for something to happen, we haven't gotten nothing. From the central lottery mitigations or anything, you showed us a pie chart up there with the pathetic little sliver for the blue line, and the program for mass transportation had become a perverted maintenance travesty. It's not become a vision for expansion of the system anymore, it's become, "Well, we've got a repair of deferred maintenance now, so forget about expansion." That's what they're telling us. And so our area is going to continue to go into economic dereliction and decline based on this. The Patrick administration has done some great disservice for dropping us, not only tailing us to take the bus, but throwing us under it with the South Coast Railline. It's going to cost more, move less people, have negligible influence on transit-oriented land use patterns. It's essentially going to be satellite parking for the benefit of downtown Boston. And it's all about the Bean County exercise, how many cars are not going to be on the expressway with that one, instead of affecting the land use synergy that happens with transportation development, which is, the North Shore is different. Do people talk about their Chapter 90 money, and how they want it for their roads, and how they use it very well? I can believe them, having had the three-ring binder with the municipal budget of being in that position. But what I see here is you've got this Peds and bike accommodation here, 100 million. Given that, and why don't you let them decide what they're going to do with it? Because I've seen these, I'm a big bike rider, I ride my bike every day to work at the River Works. And I'll tell you that this destruction of our transit corridor, intentional transit corridor, to put this bike to the slum a sea project in here, is useless to me as a cyclist for transportation. It was not a transportation facility, it seemed to be more like a linear park, a recreation facility, and unless you do snow removal and have lighting on it at night, it's not transportation. Don't try to call it that, because it isn't. So why don't you take that 100 million you've got for bike head facility, you should just roll it into your Chapter 90 budget, and let the municipalities decide how they're going to divvy it up. Another one I'd like to tell you is, you have your means testing out here, you're out of metric, you're making the decisions on how we're going to spend this money. Let me tell you something, there was a road called the New Rinkwood Turnpike, you might be familiar with it. The Mass Highway Department issued a report in 1907 when they started to build highways, and their vision of this mostly abandoned dirt road was, "It'd be too expensive and hardly anybody will use it." So we don't recommend making it a state highway. So don't believe everything you read in studies, a lot of these are bad jobs when you get go. And the credibility of your agencies is eroded by this kind of mentality. One of the other things I'd like to touch upon is, is that you need to enforce the mitigation of central lottery, the big dig mitigation. Remember the big MOU that caused the Green Line to be built? I'm saying, where is it? The Green Line is technically not nearly as difficult as doing the big dig, and yet the big dig is already becoming obsolete and already go jammed up, and the Green Line, you've got to even break ground on that. We see a blatant favoritism in the capital spending to the south of Boston suburbs. You notice that every inch of the old colony rail system got put in before everybody, they jumped to the front of the queue, and now we're sitting there saying, "Ah, well, we only have a few table scraps left to capital fund, we want the north side." We think that there's a favoritism in the political circles, and now the South Coast Railline has jumped to the queue in front of us.
Sir, I want to ask you to start off, you know, you have talked about...
Okay. So what I just kind of say is that we need more transit railway expansion on the north side. We don't need more wider highways, and we certainly don't want a saga sandwich, where you widen on the roads in 128 and 128, and widen low North Shore things in Revere, right? And you do that project, where you add the land on Route 1. I believe that that's a violation of the memorandum understanding of its capacity expansion to a radio highway inside of 128, according to the MIU. That's not supposed to happen. So don't let it happen. And don't try to palm off recreational bike trails out of the proponent transit cars as transportation, because they're not. And let me just say, I look at trucks parked in the general electric parking lot every day, and the size of the vehicles used as commuter vehicles in there, tell me that gas taxes aren't nearly high enough.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Number 10, please.
Good evening. My name is Robyn Rivera from Arlington, Massachusetts, Transportation Development Specialist with the League of Modern Motors. The League of Modern Motors of Massachusetts would like to see the citizens of Commonwealth provided a reliable, enjoyable environment for the sound and over transit options. We would also like our public transportation system running safely and lively. A tipping point for Massachusetts residents to prefer public transit to their own vehicles is ideal for road maintenance, pollution control, and safety. For this tipping point to happen, how our transit system is financed and maintained is of utmost importance. In examining MassDOT's capital investment plan, we are happy to see the plan address transit needs statewide, but it is clear we are doing a lot with a little bit of money. It is also clear, and instantly, that replacing MBTA buses, we are doing nothing at all. We are deeply disappointed that the CIP fails to invest in replacing MBTA buses. With 450 million in bus overalls presently needed, failure to invest in this need will cause delays, congestion, safety issues, and increased pollution. Buses are an important part of the MBTA, servicing some of the lowest-income residents who rely on them frequently. We would like to take this opportunity to highlight the active streets provision provided by Transportation for Mass in our transportation bond bill. We support legislature that builds active, vibrant, and safe communities, and hope to see this passed. It's also important to note that riders who will be facing a fare increase should also be provided with reliable transportation options. Lastly, for the state's transportation system to remain vibrant and healthy, it is of utmost importance that financing for transportation be seen as a top area for legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Would 11 through 14, please, whether? Number 12?
My name is Rick Dantowski, I'm here as a transit advocate. And as a federal employee, this agency is also facing congressional mandates of measurable outcomes and performance standards. I feel very bad. What I'd like to focus on today is really the mass, the we move mass publication, in which you state there are a couple of focuses, two focuses I'd like to comment on, of which you call as needing customer service goals and needs, and also establishing a culture of innovation and accountability of the state transportation level. Michelle, it's sort of lacking, and I've made a few suggestions to come out of the facts. First of all, reading your publications, I didn't understand how simple consumer customer needs get met, and I think you need to make very clear in your final publications, how an individual consumer can get, where does he go to? You know, give you an example, I ride the train in here from Lynn every day into downtown Boston. This winter has been brutal, there's no protection from the wind on the platform. Years ago, and several times, I've ridden to the T, asked them to put maybe one of their old bus shelters. If you look at the Sullivan Square Station, they have those old iron bus shelters on the subway platform, it's a nice wind protection. As we ride by in the train, you look at the yard on the Mystic River there, there must be about 100 of them just stacked up there, probably ready to be thrown out. All you need to do, this is a simple thing, it should be a simple process, if you're going to say that you're going to be customer oriented, how does a customer get a simple request like that done? I'm not asking for 100 million dollars in Chapter 90 money, I'm just asking for, take the shelter that's sitting in your yard and put it on the platform for wind protection for your riders. That's a simple thing. You guys are all thinking big here, but also think simple and small. But in addition to that, there's some other ways, things that can be done. You're talking about revenue, everybody's screaming, "Revenue, the feds are squeezing on us, the state gas tax isn't enough, blah, blah, blah." You say in your publication that you're going to focus on innovation and accountability, where is it? How are you going to do that? And I'll give you some examples. I'm a very big transit advocate, so I ring a lot of flags. There's a transit system called Caltrain in California that runs between San Jose and San Francisco, happens to be the exact same distance between Framingham or Worcester and Boston. 10 years ago, they started a new service called the Baby Bullet Service, which uses the exact same engines that they're now having delivered here, the exact same rail cars, the tracks are built to the same, federal railway installations, glass floor standard of up to 80 miles an hour, which you never run the trains at, except for maybe your new constructions, you're talking about doing that on the New Pittsburgh line, and you're doing that, talking about doing it on the Haverhill line, at least for the Downeaster, where the tracks are a bit too heavy, double track. But you don't seem to be thinking about that in Worcester. Okay? It's a common sense way, and let me tell you what happened when Mass went Caltrain did that. Their revenue went up in the last 10 years, ridership, I'm sorry, the ridership went up 175% in the last 10 years after they put the Baby Bullet Service in. Now, we have someone from the planning department, I'm going to ask him, try and get a trip out there and ride the system and see what it does, so that you can plan it here. out there and ride the system and see what it does, so that you can plan it here. Okay? Not only did their ridership go up 170%, their fare box recovery rate went up 22%. First of all, the ridership in the Boston-Framingham line hasn't changed at all in twenty-eight and the last ten years, and our fare box recovery hasn't gone up much at all. Now, that's just a simple replication of an existing services out there. You don't have to do thousands of studies and all kinds of things. Just go out there and look at their service and see what can be replicated here. Now, there's other things that can be done too. And I'm just going to go through a couple of them. Please hold. So one is the speed. Let's talk about right now, you've got two riders under construction. There's no parking at the Salem station. You've got a garage sitting four blocks from here with a thousand spaces in it. It's never even filled with more than like 300 at the most, and that's when people are parking their cars in there because they want to off the street for snowplow. There's no connection between getting the passengers from Salem to park here and using transaction from, training from here. And one of the main reasons is, the Salem Express doesn't stop in Lynn. Now, one of the reasons it doesn't stop in Lynn is everybody wants to get into the slots that are in North Station. But there's a fact out here that seems just so absurd to me, that in 1996, there was a crash in Chelsea where a bike car hit an oil tanker that was stuck on the tracks. That little tank truck, tank truck was stuck on the tracks because as it was crossing it, it was a rough crosser, its airline brake line, its air brake line broke. Things stopped and the track was jammed. Along comes a bike car at sixty miles an hour, which was the track speed at that time, crashes into this gas and paint truck. Nobody got killed from the crash. Everyone died from suffocation because a fire started, and the door in the car opened inward, and they got all piled against the door, and the lights dim. So the Department of Public Utilities put a speed restriction, thirty-five miles an hour on the trains going through Chelsea. That was a 1996 temporary speed restriction. Okay? Temporary, until crossings were fixed, regraded, new equipment was in, that's why all the trains now are sliding doors rather than the ones that open. They all have windows that you bust out, they all have tools in them, and so forth. And I've written to the T a number of times, asking them to go to the PUC and get that speed restriction lifted. If you got that speed rejected or lifted, you could have the express trains from Beverly and Salem stop at the Lynn station and still get to the North Station in the same timeframe that they do now. So this is simple management and accountability issues that have to be addressed. You have to find a mechanism for how does this stuff get addressed in your planning? I mean, how does someone like me that can see this make a suggestion to someone that will listen to it and think, "This is common sense, why can't we do it?" Now, of course, the big ban in New York, and the best way that you can answer your finance means, is to simply replicate what MTR did in Hong Kong when it was under British rule, not the Chinese, it was done under the British. MTR is Mass Transit Corporation Limited. Runs all the transit in Hong Kong. It runs all the commuter rail in London. It runs the commuter rail and a number of Melbourne, Australia, and other, other agents. Which, by the way, didn't respond at all to the, for a new operator for commuter rail, which to me, I just don't understand. They are in the business of operating other systems. But here's what they did to get funding in Hong Kong. And there's another reason why it can't be done in the United States and in Boston, is the company was an agency just like the MBTA, the public agency. It turned itself into a for-profit corporation. What it did is it sold only 24% of its stock. The rest of the stock was held by the government of Hong Kong, which could be the state of Massachusetts. They did an IPO for this 24% of the stock. They took that money from the IPO. They used it to, in Hong Kong, homeland has to be leased to the government, it's not sold. So they leased land next to stations, and then they got into partnerships with developers, and they built on that land and on the air rights over the stations. And to this day, right now, they do not get one penny in subsidy, in subsidy from the Hong Kong government. Because when they built, when they had development done on the tracks and the adjoining space with land, they ground leased it where they get a percentage, just like Mass where it does. This is, this is not green science, this is poor business. All that land around here intertwined with built, the Seaport. The, by the way, the Seaport Hotel or parking garage, they get a percentage of the gross rent as income. You could do the same thing with the T. They do the T at Assembly Square. You spend twenty-five million dollars building a station, and you don't get any benefit from the land development next to it. What they did in Hong Kong, they've done it so they get all the benefit from it. And it supports it so that the government of Hong Kong now doesn't give them a penny of subsidy a year. In fact, since they own 76% of the stock, and it's a public listed stock, they get dividend income of millions of dollars, hundreds of million dollars.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to start off your article.
Okay. I just have one question on these comments that are due tomorrow. Is that on this, the capital improvement plan or on the we move Massachusetts plan?
It's on both.
It's on both. Thank you. Can I get the address of where they sent it?
Yes, we've got the computer, it's up there. And if it's coming probably ready now, you can give it to one of the people.
Oh, I see.
Okay, we'll have that up there in a moment. So you'll see that there. Thank you. Number 12, please.
Yeah, sir, number 13. This is for last week.
Okay.
So, my name is Ed Marshall, I'm a senior resident. I guess we ran it on the way. What would you do? I mean, that's, that's a period. The reason I came to that was I attended a similar event as 2003, it was just 500 Danvers, and it was 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, 91, 92, 94, 95, 96, 97, 98, 99, 100. I don't see more lanes being, except for tracking more cars. And as gas loan presses consistently age, those are poor fellows, and that's not, the T ridership is only going to go up. We have a need for capital, we have a rolling stock. I also think that the decisions we make now on planning are going to affect land use, residency plans, decades of service of highways, and the suburbs. There's no reason to actually be taking those once again with rare stock. We are fortunate in the Northeast because we are so densely settled, it makes more sense to try to grow more highways and traffic to 505 and Lynn, these are densely settled areas, it makes much more sense to try to reestablish some of these rail lines, have a liking for bike paths, only because they do preserve a lot of the placement, because we will need that once again. And so I'm encouraged, I didn't see 2003, Bush, a partner, I ended up with a short model, which I hate, Danvers, which I thought was a good idea, trying to pull cars off of this current climate century, are still a partner, lots of pressure. I didn't see those in the current plans, and I'm encouraged to take a look at those. The rail lines are still sitting there, and could potentially be more connected to Salem. It's great to have a garage, but they're just going to get trapped in Salem, so people buy their, use it, so the trucks are people's, cars are supposed to be where they're going to go, so it makes a lot of sense to, you know, just, that's enough.
Thank you very much. People who were not, who didn't have cards, if you'd like to speak, you're more than welcome to. Give up your hand up.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm sorry. What, recovering up, Lynn Station, I'm here. I've been told, I've been told, I can take the train, it's easy to get in in Boston, I'm going to MBTA, and I'm not, and so. They can't use the left-hand wheelchairs, up in the wind, rain, and snow. Okay, so opening the door of your car provides you with a snowplow. You just want to do it, but that's what it's like for the other people in the Northeast. Okay? If I take the train, I go all the way to Swat, past Swat, you get off at Swat, because it's easy to get from town, or it's just here, and I don't want to go to Swat. Okay? Get the car to the wheelchair, and then you go, and then you go up there, and it's down, and you go to the wheelchair, and you get off around 3:00. And you get off, and sometimes nobody does it for a piece of my paper, I'm not going to have a foot. So they have to give the camera, the camera's a picture of them. So it is a right thing, it's a nice, but again, people are living in wheelchairs. I'm saying mine, I'm, you've got the bike, you've got the desk, you have the chair, and you're on the wheelchair. But she sounds to me as environmental, I'm going to take the LSA this month. Okay, we talk about the EMT, the investments, they got a great walk place, you're buying some, just, and you're greatly involved, so it's not, I'm just stressing, but that means not getting wheelchair in there. And just so the guests preview as a man, a lot of that happened, basically the only one, I've got the whole street, and we need another sign. Now, there's going to be at least 20 of us starting to do wheelchairs. People are getting older, unfortunately, and you can't count walking those with it, you've got wheelchairs, you're all going to be, they're going to be right along with, people are going to be a couple years behind. And I've watched, okay, I've watched people, I've watched my own brother go through, and they're close enough, just completed later, they're like they're walking, they're like they're game, they're like they're, people are, I, they're, they're taking like over my, over my, over train, they're, they're beautiful, beautiful walkers. But that's a situation, just not feeling that much today. And only if now without it, many of them will walk, because we're probably, I'm sorry, I used to prefer it, okay?
Thank you very much. Anybody else want to speak, yes, sir? Could you speak, Marv?
So, I'm Brian Shaw, I'm president, no particular affiliation. Couple things came up when I was thinking about various transit issues. One is, where's, is there going to be any funding for owner's studies on the UDLI? It's very exciting, if we don't have funding to at least take consultants, to take a look and see what's going to be required for it, it's probably not going to happen by 2024 as everyone would like. Which brings me to another item, that is just the availability of information to the public. And sometimes it feels like I have to chase bird in the platter, to figure out what needs are. And, well, it's great that there's a big blue line, a little Facebook page that can tell me these things, and friend, I happen to be a civil engineer, and I should have to do that. It would be really, really, really helpful to have links to the latest publicly available documents, whether it's in public comment period, or finally, or document available from websites, whether it be MassDOT, or the Regional Transit Planning Commission, and even knowing where to find the name of the Regional Transit Planning Commission would be very helpful. Especially for younger folks like me who tend to be increasingly interested in transit, increasingly adept with things like the internet, and increasingly interested in having fewer cars and more trains. Another thing that comes to mind is just, there are a lot of job centers that are really not on public transit, and weren't built to be on public transit, specifically around 2028. I think it was, maybe, most examples of the job center, and certainly Hoover, Burlington's also, people are a lot of those. There's a lot of jobs that are just very hard to get to by public transit, but they're simply not in Boston. All the transit goes into Boston with maybe a few exceptions, and I would like to see a few proposals for, just, I know it takes time to build ridership along the route, and I know these aren't the most densely populated routes, but perhaps, and study to see if it's viable to bring a bus service between Lynn or Salem to say, we went to Berlin. And that's just one example on the North Shore, I mean, for Boston, I'm sure you can find many more in the south, southern part of West. That would be, just, at least to say, we've done a study, and it's worth doing, or it's not worth doing. And if it's not worth doing, then so be it. That's it.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to comment? I believe we have reached the end of the presentation. None of us will be sticking around for a while, we have room to later talk. If you want to talk to us about some specific subjects, we're glad to look, engage in that conversation. One of my MassDOT colleagues, one of my MBTA colleagues, for joining me here this evening, and I want to thank you for coming to this public conference session. Thank you very much.